Before we start, can we have a moment of silence for Ed McWilliams? Ed was a dear friend of mine, he's been a friend of many, many people in town. He's done a lot of things for Ed and he certainly will be missed. So if you have a moment of silence and maybe a sound of prayer and move on. Alrighty, a motion to adopt the agenda. Second?
Aye.
In favor? Say aye. Any votes? Okay, no votes. Minutes of January 7th, a motion to accept. And are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Small correction, third. Number eight on the second page. Misspelled. A-A-R. Now it should be T-H-I-S. We're about the second page. Second page, number eight, A-A-R. Any other additions or corrections?
I made a motion to accept. The January 7th minute set is correct.
Second? Followed, any discussion? Followed, favor? Aye. Can we vote? Can I get the, who made the motion again?
Dan made the motion, now in session.
Okay, thank you. The warrants were signed by the complete select board, so that's been done. The highway report, Danny?
We've just been busy with the storms and working on trucks. Really haven't been doing anything else, patching some hall walls in there and there. Been pretty busy just dealing with the storms and trucks.
No exciting events with the trucks? Everything seemed to work alright?
No. No jinxing.
No.
It's like, pretty good right now. I mean, it's better than half full. They've been about a week when you order, so still. I do know they're on the outside stop bottom, so once that's gone, it'll be just whatever they get in on rail. Yeah, both falls.
How much more do you need? I don't know.
No. I'm gonna hold that. These don't really, this one that we just had was a real cold week. It's very cold. Sometimes didn't solve at all, and they tried to do it today, it's making worse. We did it Sunday because we knew it would be off Monday, so we did it late Sunday to get a start on it. And I mean, for the most part, today, a lot of it bared out even more. We just tried to mow it a little bit more. If it stays cold, it doesn't take a lot of sand forcing. I mean, a little sand in the storm. But when it's coming for tomorrow night, that doesn't sound very good.
Any other questions for Danny? Go ahead.
I would just like to say thank you to Danny and his crew on Sunday morning. Main Street was clear by 8:00 a.m. And that's pretty remarkable, when you have almost 15 inches of snow. So, it's our job.
Okay. Nothing else, then. Ed, are you here?
Yes.
Ed, why don't you stand up, sit down.
Whatever works for you.
Whatever works for you, but we'd like to hear what you have to say.
Okay, so as everyone recalls from the last update that I gave you guys, we were under a forced merger, under Act 46, we would have an organizing meeting to be held by January 29th. As I also indicated, 31 towns have signed on for a lawsuit against the state about the validity of these forced mergers. Because of that lawsuit, the attorneys and the attorney general of Vermont agreed to a two-week setback, so now this organizational meeting has been reworn for February 15th, likely it's around, I'm not sure of the date. That being said, additionally, what's happened with the lawsuit is a judge was assigned, the towns were asked to sign a waiver for this judge because the judge has a daughter in school system of one of the towns that's part of the lawsuit. The waivers were signed and then were put in. However, there's been no further action on the lawsuit. There's been a lot of rumblings that we may wind up with a change of judge in this particular instance. The latest that's going on right now is there is a belief that there will be some language introduced into the legislature this week which will postpone any forced measures for one more budget cycle. So in other words, we would have another complete year before these mergers were put into place. At this point, that's where we stand right now. You know, we haven't been before a judge, we don't have these days. There's a couple of other additional lawsuits that we're not party to that are being put forth in various places. We're taking into account other potential reasons that these forced mergers shouldn't occur, but right now, I think our biggest hope is going to be that the legislature goes ahead and puts postponement on right now. The Grafton School Board and the Athens Grafton School Board have proceeded with budgetary articles as if there's not going to be any forced merger, and so there are articles that will be part of the town meetings of both towns. Those are very favorable budgets, just as a little forewarning, they look good for us. And that's the current status right now.
I read this morning in the Bradwell Reform that there are three bills that were being introduced into the legislature, similar bill but three different bills.
Okay, I haven't heard of that.
That's what the Bradwell Reform said this morning. So I don't recall what each bill was, but there were three. One was postponed a year, but there was something about, I don't know exactly, unconstitutional or it was illegal what they were doing, I don't know, but...
Yeah, I don't know. I think the best bet will be, and one that would stand the most chance of passing, would be a bill that would say just postpone this for one more budget cycle, because now, the timeframe under which they're attempting to force this through, we'd put through with our budgets, they'd be valid for like three months and then they wouldn't be valid anymore. And I don't think the state has figured out then how to calculate taxes at all on these new merged entities, so. Again, I can't predict anything at this critical point in time, but that's where we stand right now. The Athens Board, the Grafton Board, and the Westminster Board are holding a joint meeting tomorrow night at BSU at 6:00, where we will probably be in executive session discussing strategy, should there be a meeting in February. But I don't think that we really want to talk very much about what that strategy would be to the camera.
I agree.
So anybody have any other questions right now? Where we stand with this? It's still very much in a state of flux right now. All I think we do know is that none of the towns who are getting forced into these forced mergers want these forced mergers. And I guess one other thing that I can say also relative to the way that things appear to be going statewide, again, this is just a position paper, but Daniel French, who's the Secretary of Education, has put forth a position paper stating what he feels are valid reasons to have just one single school district in the entire state of Vermont. Okay, so there's been no action on that, there's been no thoughts on that. It would not sit well with a lot of people, I'm sure, but that is something that's boiling way, way, way back there. Again, it's just a paper, it's just someone putting forth an idea, but obviously, all these mergers are sort of leaning things to larger school districts. That's what I know right now.
Just, I missed, Grafton, Weston, and Athens are going to get together when?
Grafton, Westminster, and Athens are getting together tomorrow night prior to the supervisor reunion.
Thank you.
So that'll be at 6:00 tomorrow night at the supervisor reunion offices.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you for coming. As soon as we know more, I'll update you guys know more. I appreciate it. Kim has asked me to bypass number six. She is, her daughter is arriving, and they're going to find out what the sex of the little baby is going to be, and she wanted to be home. She said, could you please postpone it? So it's okay with everybody, we'll just move to seven, which is the town meeting. I don't think we need her for that. We need to approve the warning. So we need a motion.
So number six was moved, not the second?
Yeah, we just postponed it, postponed it to, she gets here. Number six, I mean, yeah, number six. Seven, yeah. We need to approve our motion to approve the warning as presented.
How many motions do you approve, the one I asked presented?
Second?
Do we have any discussion on this? Any questions on any of the articles? I think this is the last shot we got, if you want me to join you, sir.
My, oh, I already, yeah, I do have a question. On the, to establish the reserve fund for the Grafton Village Park Maintenance and Renovation Fund, was that logging only going to go to that one parcel, or was it sort of parks in general? I know that was the initial, we were going to use it to renovate that, but in the future, was that strictly going to be that one park? As this is Grafton Village Park Maintenance and Renovation.
As I understand it, yeah, because the other parks have funding.
Is that right?
They have funding to...
I just took it, park as well.
Alright, so all in favor of the warrants as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Bill, now do you want us to sign this now?
Who made the motion?
Yes.
I did.
We want to sign it now, not for another day?
Okay. Do, yes, I wanted to decide it, because it has to be done now.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Give us a second, please.
I do.
Cindy, a second.
Thanks.
Okay, number, the overweight permits, we have, Cindy, you want to read or you're the clerk here, why don't you read that?
If I could, just before you move to approve it, the one for the logging company, Bruce is his first name.
Kenny.
Kenny.
Lions and Kenny.
He has not sent his certificate insurance. Blue Ridge Logging has, and so has the third one, but I would approve it, approve him, subject to re-receiving the insurance certificate. The other two you can approve.
Cindy, just read the two, the three applicants for the board, so we get into the record.
Okay, you got Blue Chip Trucking.
Is that the one that hasn't done the...
Blue Chip has it.
Lions and Kenny.
Oh, boy. Okay. Is that the other one?
Lions and Kenny, I need their insurance, yeah.
It's Kenny. Kenny. And what's the other third one?
Newport, same thing, Brown.
And Carroll Concrete together.
So I think we need a motion to approve the three with the one condition, so we only, the motion is over. Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor of approving the three applicants with the exception, with the condition on the Lions and Kenny application, believe he receives insurance? Say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Does the chairman sign it?
Do we, no, I think you sign it.
I sign it.
Yeah, we'll sign it. Okay, so I'll take care of that, Bill. You just sign this one.
I'll get you the, we'll get the warrant signed too as we go along.
Okay.
Bill, who's going, are you going to give the report on the WRC quarterly thing, or Alan, are you going to, or?
I don't care, somebody's got to do it.
Next one.
Okay, go ahead.
So the other night, while some people were at the public hearing for the town plan, Bill Kearns and myself, as emergency management director and assistant director, attended a meeting in West Dover at the fire station. It was coordinated by Wyndham Regional Planning Commission, Elisa Sodaro, who is like the emergency coordinator for Wyndham Regional, and she kind of facilitated the meeting. It was supposed to be emergency management directors and fire chiefs. It was a huge turnout, but it was a good turnout, and I would say, what, maybe 12 or 14 people altogether? Good discussion, they talked about the role of the emergency management director and legal authority that they have. Kevin Beatty, who is emergency management director in Londonderry, spoke about their response and some of their successes, some of their frustration. They were actually having power longer than we were, even, and some of the problems that they had were dealing with people that were responding and making some of the calls, which they should have waited until the weather was a little better. So they compounded the situation and tangled up Route 11, so that made an issue for the responding power folks. So anyways, it was a good discussion back and forth. The next meeting will be, they're quarterly meetings, the next one will be in June, no, April, the next one will be in April, and it'll be in Putney. And they've already invited and received confirmation, there'll be five people, some of them pretty high level from Fremont Power.
Yes.
That will attend the meeting. So we'll plan to attend that. The, and then in July, we offered to host it here. The idea was to move around the county. So we're going to host it here and demonstrate, or talk about some of the things that we use for our T-card rack. Many of them had never seen it, and so we're going to talk a little bit about that, some of what lessons we learned in Irene. So it's meant to be kind of an opportunity for people to share ideas and cry on each other's shoulders a little bit, but it was a good meeting. It's relatively new, so it's, I think it will, as people speak to other peers and say these meetings are worthwhile, all of those guys get to go to, and gals get to go to way more meetings than they want to, as you would know. And so you start to pick and choose what's worthwhile, so this one was good.
The next item is the addition of bid for the ongoing town hall renovations.
Once again, I had mentioned last meeting, I think, that we're looking to move ahead, continuing to work on the town hall. We did manage to get a bid proposal letter to go out as soon as possible. I think everybody on board has had the opportunity to see it. It was sent out last week sometime, I'm sure everybody's had the opportunity to at least go over it. Want to get this thing out, so I asked if there's any potential changes or updates that might be in this thing. If not, I'd like to get a motion so we can move this thing ahead. And then as far as the dates of when it will be received and the cutoff date, those can be put in sometime this week. We don't have to do that tonight, we have to have a look ahead on our calendar on when our, the meeting would be to open up the bids and things like that, as far as I'm concerned. Don't have to do that tonight. Concern more of the body of the letter and what we're requesting to have done and a motion to move forward. And just so, just in case anybody wasn't here, this proposal is going to be to remove all the siding on that building on the north and the west sides. The west side is a shorter portion because part of it is brick and part of it started to be repaired, I'm not quite sure, that was quite a long time ago. And then the replacement of all the trim, trim particularly on the west side upon the second floor is beginning to pull apart a lot of the wall. So that's what we want to do, we really want to get the outside of the building sealed up, and then we can start doing some work on the inside of the building. So this is basically to do the exterior siding on the slab, which is a long process.
You're going to put clavestones here? You're going to take off the asphalt?
Yep, asphalt, and then there's metal siding underneath that that's got to come off. We want to strip it down to the bare sheeting. And I can just read a paragraph here as to if you want to get an idea, because, and then once we get to the sheeting, well, some of the sheeting could potentially be rotted, so it has to be replaced, but one of the bigger things that, once all the siding comes off and we see what the sheeting is, is what's in there for insulation. That sort of becomes the crap shooter, this whole thing. Somebody can look at it and say, okay, next number of square feet, and pull this off, put new siding on it, but we, x-ray vision nowadays just isn't as good as it used to be, so to see what's in the wall sort of could potentially become a type of material type of thing. But we have to, as long as this is torn apart, we have to insulate the best we can to break up this on top of this insulation stand.
Is all the silver found?
Well, no, it's, there's also a thing here that all trim, et cetera, has to be repaired, replaced, and matched to what the existing trim is. The building is on the historic register, as it states, and said, therefore, all work is performed, the Secretary of Materials standard for historic buildings. So everything has to match and be painted, so it matches color-wise and everything else. So any thoughts from the board?
Not familiar with prime tech hemlock.
That's what, that's what we used on the, when the siding was repaired up on the second floor, when we put the new roof on.
Meaning clavestones?
Clavestones, yes, clavestones, okay. Not cedar?
No, it's not cedar, it's hemlock. Cedar becomes, it's certainly a nice material, but the expense a lot of things, and there was no cedar anywhere else on the building. And there's apparently this, this prime tech hemlock, it's primed on both sides, it's ready to go up and then to be painted.
So are we putting prime tech hemlock because we are required to, because of being a historic building, as opposed to the, a lot of the builders today are using concrete clavestones? They look, they really look like clavestones, but they're concrete, and they have all the texture and grain in them, as if they're wood, but they're, I mean, once you put them up, they're good.
No, it is, it matches, it matches, the rest of everything that's been repaired there. Personally, I didn't give a thought about the concrete, and then the other thing is being a historic building, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Well, that's why I asked.
Yeah, that would be my initial reaction, was being on the register of historic, national historic building, that, you know, anything other than probably wood, hemlocks, cedar would be the proper thing to do. Now, the prime tech, as you can see, is more equivalent, and you don't have to, you know, absolutely have that prime tech, but as long as it's equivalent and matches the specs, I wouldn't have a problem.
You have, you mentioned here the septic event stack?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you subcontracting that out to a person that's qualified for the septic stuff?
All we want to do is...
Like after what you said, may have relocated?
Ideally relocated. I mean, the vent stack just goes right straight up the pack of the building, and right now it's just as, it comes out as cast iron, and I think goes to maybe plastic, and then it's just terrible. I mean, it was done with no thought process at all, how to make this look decent. So the way the paragraph says, a septic vent stack needs to be either relocated or at least enclosed with the same siding material, the climate camouflage as much as possible. The other thing we're going to have to do is that wooden staircase on the back is going to have to be configured, because when that exit from the second floor and the first floor out the back of the building, that staircase was attached directly to the building, so there's no way in essence to prevent rock from that. So that's got to come out like two inches, that's going to be a lot of work. But again, I think to do it properly for the, for the next, you know, 100 years of the building, that staircase has got to be stepped away from the building to prevent rock from forming on the back. So that's that next paragraph, that north side wooden staircase will need to be reconfigured to allow new siding to be installed, proper airflow to prevent rock. But the vent stack is at least encased, so it doesn't look like this deep air plane sticking up the back of the building, it looks terrible. And if it can be relocated inside, then you just stuff it out the roof, whatever, that will be the way to do it, but I'm assuming they did this for a reason in the first place, I don't know, we have...
Bill? Yeah, I just, Kathy, it isn't, it isn't a septic issue, it's in the building where it's up, it's just a matter of a carpenter or a plumber fixing that. It isn't, it is, we're not dealing with the septic system, it's just the vent in here, yeah.
Vent stack, yeah, septic vent stack.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to accept the...
Can I just add one more thing? Sorry. If you look at the bottom of the thing, that last paragraph, we have a package that goes out to them. Whoever gets the bid, they have to provide us with all the information we need for passive, for our workers' comp audit. Anybody who, anybody who wants to can work on this building, if he's a contractor who has workers' comp, if it's, you know, ABC contracting and they have 60 workers and they have them under workers' comp, we just need a copy of that. If they're a single guy working by himself, he can, he can do it, he generally doesn't have workers' comp for himself, he can do it as long as he waives it. If he has somebody working with him, it gets complicated, because unless he's buying workers' comp for the guy he has hired, then that person has to waive too, but I'm not sure, certain how to do that. I know how to make the contractor waive all his rights to be taken care of if he falls off the ladder. I don't know how you protect the town from his worker unless the contractor buys workers' comp insurance, so that, and it isn't our issue, it's passive's issue, because if we don't do it right, when they do an audit, they'll make us pay for the worker, whether he got hurt or not, covering the worker while the worker was on there. So we have to, we have to do that right. So we have to do that right. So yes, anybody can bid on it, even if they don't have workers' comp, provided that they can waive the liability to the town.
Make the motion that we proceed with the invitation to bid as written. Wait a second.
Pass second.
Any other discussion? Hold a favor, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Sorry, Kim, tell us, do we have a boy or a girl?
A boy. She doesn't call the rest of the family there. It's the first month tonight.
It's on TV.
It's on TV.
Anyway, we waited for you, so we moved the agenda. We took care of the warrants, the warnings, so that's all done. So now we'll move to six here and talk about the quarterly budget review. There's two reasons why I put this on. One, we do review the budget on a quarterly basis, which is now the second quarter. But in light of the severe winter we're having and with the tremendous use of sand, salt, and labor, we just thought it would be good to have everybody apprised that there was a possibility, and say we will, because winter could end in another week and we could have a mild winter. The possibility that we could, you know, be over budget this year. So just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that we are aware of it. And I'm not sure there's a lot of things we can do. But if there is, then we can ask for suggestions. I did talk to Danny today, and I'm not suggesting we should or shouldn't. But I had an occasion to go to Brooklyn on Monday, and then I left the house and Graffton's roads were bare, and Chester's roads were bare. But I got to Andover, and I got to Weston, and I got to Mount Holly, and they were not there. They were just plowed, no sand, no salt. I was a little surprised when they did that. And I talked to Danny, and Danny said, yeah, you don't have to, but the policy here is not to do that, is Graffton. So I just put it out. I don't know if that's a way we can save money. I'm not sure. It's a good thing to do. I'm just bringing it out as an observation. You can comment on that, Danny, if you want.
I don't mind doing that. I just got to, you know, have your guys' support when people start calling. There's some places in town, like headed out of town, headed toward Chester, I don't think you can on that hill, Wyndham Hill, Townsend Road. I think you could leave, you know, cut back on it, someone 121, toward game's fourth. But it's going to be a big change for some people. When it's cold like that, it's not really slippery, you know, when they're left white. When it gets warm, today, you would have to deal with it. All the towns that did leave it today, they would have to deal with it.
So basically, what you do, you wait until it's raining then?
Exactly. Yeah.
Back in the day, you had a storm, you know, plow until it stops, you know? Wow.
Those days don't happen anymore.
We plowed three times a storm. It'd be 70 hours sometimes.
So Kim, do you want to say anything you want to add to that? Do you have some observations that we should know as to pressure?
I'm seeing that we're pretty much on target for most of the things. Anything, a lot of, some of the stuff that we see at 100% is because we paid us, that needed to be insured, things like that. Those probably, those are usually twice a year, probably eight or so, that's why we're seeing it at 100 rather than being at 50 or under. There might be a couple items on there that didn't have a budget in mind item, but we did spend on them, like water testing. Then you could go to the village park and the Wilson Park. Those are a little over because I need to bring money from the trustee of public funds and replace it because the trustee of public funds supports the Wilson Park. Have some of that. Overall, I think we're doing okay as far as where we're at right now. The post office, other services, I think I've got, I had to pay the lease for the post office miscellaneous expenses, the 2919. That was for the lease. And now that they're going through a realtor, we have that commission, we had to pay it upfront. There's little things like that that we see that are over. I can usually tell you why, and if not, I can do it, they'll transact it. Some of Danny's items. Do you guys have any questions? Anything else?
No, the only thing I want to make sure is on page three, under the town hall, we're 260.88%, but I assume that's because that $41,680 hasn't been transferred over from the reserve fund for the...
That's right, because there's a reserve. And that probably, like I said, the number I explained won't happen until the end of this fiscal year when we're audited again. Is that your question?
Any other questions or comments on the budget? Let's just hope that we don't have an continuation of this ice and snow and we stick with more traditional...
Too good for the next couple of days.
I know.
Then back cold again.
Okay. All right, public comment? Any public comment? Yes, Alyssa?
So if I may, I'd like to come back a little bit to that incident with the stuck truck. I know you discussed it last time, but I was unable to attend that meeting. I was the person who came on the scene when it happened, when this...
Were you talking about the truck that on Middletown Road and...
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And the first thing the driver said, after she asked me whether there was any cellphone connection, was, how come there is no trucks sign at the bottom of the road? She was following her GPS, but she said if there had been a no trucks sign, she as a truck driver would have immediately seen it. And instead of following her GPS, she would have backed up and investigated which way to go. And, you know, of course, a local driver knows what that would mean if a no trucks sign would be no problem for a local truck driver. But the driver from Kentucky, who's just following GPS, does not know that. And so I think that's a suggestion that we should take very seriously because it was a potentially bad situation when no emergency vehicle would have gotten through for three hours. 121 West and Fairbanks Road and Patton Forest Road were blocked for three hours. And in an area also where there is no cellphone connection. So if I had not come on the scene and then gone to call 911, the driver would have needed to walk someplace to find a phone, to even report this incident. And that would have made even a further delay. So it was potentially a pretty bad situation, and then I think the easy solution would be a sign. We know that we have had trucks stuck at that corner before, and the lumber trucks know what to do. You know, they back up if they even go that way. But a trucker from someplace else in the country does not know that. So I would like to ask the board to consider, whatever the procedure is, I don't know, to get a sign posted at the bottom of Middletown Road, no trucks.
Okay, we duly noted, Alyssa, and we will discuss that at appropriate time.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I have one.
Go ahead, Sylvia.
I was glad to see we have a town plan started. And I've read most of it, and I find it agreeable. There's only one thing that I'm not sure needs to be there is the history of beavers. I think they're dangerous quite a bit. I don't think it's really in the town plan.
Is that an appendix of it? Is that in the appendix or the house?
No, certainly not. A lot of it is. That's quite likely, yeah.
May I comment?
Sure.
So this was a document which is basically the natural history of the town. And of course, beavers are a big part of it, but it deals with a lot more than that. And Skip Lyle, as a wildlife biologist, as an expert, was asked several years ago to create something that would basically spell out the natural resources history of the town. And that's what he did. And the planning commission has included that document as a reference. It's not even an appendix to the town plan. It's a reference that's attached to the town plan. And there's a lot of valuable information in there, especially for someone who doesn't know the history of the natural resources.
History too. I was just reading how Vermont used to have elk. And I guess we killed them all along, just like we did the beavers. And the elk won't be coming back. Well, the whitetail deer, same with that.
We're going to really have a discussion.
Okay. And my other comment is to do with the unified data building. I would draw my... I don't know if I voted for that or not, but, I mean, to make somebody that wants a business, to make it difficult more than to have a business, I don't think is fair. A man with a stoneworks there, he's got to have his stones outside. And I think that's not being fair.
But Sylvia, I don't know whether you can draw your vote or not, but we can certainly put this back on the agenda if so wanted.
I think it's...
Any other public comment?
I have a public comment. During the town, during the town plan presentation a week ago, there was a letter from Bill Kearns who was writing. And it seemed to be incredibly rude letter that criticized all the work that had been done to create the town plan for the past five years. And I wonder if Bill would comment on that. He apparently wrote it with town administrative letter.
Mr. Chair, do you want me to comment? That's up to you. I was asked by the chair of the planning commission, I asked for them to get together with me and just talk about the town plan. And then he asked me if I could express it in writing. So I expressed it in writing. And I don't change, I don't change one thing I wrote in that town plan, in that email. The town plan is inconsistent. It says you can do one thing in one place and another place, or rather, it says you can't do something in one place. And in the same chapter, it says, oh, yes, you can do that everywhere. There are places where, and it's unread, practically unreadable because, and I know Kim and the rest of the planning commission worked really hard to reach consensus, but in reaching that consensus, they didn't go back and then smooth over the rough edges that they left when they took out or added words. And it's practically unreadable. If it was done well, once everybody reached a consensus, it would have been presented to one person. Generally, that is the town planner. I've only done about 14 of these. To the town planner who then writes it really well, without changing it, but just writes it really well so you can read it. If you want to do an exercise, read any chapter in the new town plan, and then pick up the old town plan and read it. You can read the whole town plan. At least some people tell me they haven't read it in an hour, the old one. This one, it takes you forever to get through it, and sometimes at the end of a sentence, you're shaking your head because you don't even know what the sentence said. Sometimes it's because somebody made a change in the middle, and then they didn't go back and then figure out how to smooth out the changes. And that's basically what I told them, that you could go through the whole thing and correct it as an English teacher, and that's what needs to be done. It needs to be smoothed out and made. And the inconsistencies removed, the contradictions removed, and the inanities where it just said, it'd go on and on in a paragraph, and at the end of the paragraph, you don't know what it said. So I appreciate all the work that the planning commission did on it. I think that they did a really good job. I think Dave did a good job pushing it through. It's just that, as I had asked him over the phone, and Chuck, what is the hurry? We don't have a town plan now. Take a month, go through the thing, write it so it sounds good, and then bring it back. That I find it, reading it, and it representing the town of Graffton, I find it embarrassing. But that's just, that's my opinion on the way it's written. The content of it, I disagree with some of it, but for the most part, it's okay. And I think that a lot of the things that were most objectional to it were fought hard to by some and taken out and changed. So that was my comment, and my comment would be the same today if somebody asked me to comment on the town plan. I think it's, there's a lot of good work in there. It just that, it just needs to be smoothed and written by, as if it were written by one person. That's the problem with writing any document by committee, especially when it has many chapters. Somebody at the end has to come back and then write it so that it sounds like it was written by one person.
But that doesn't have the feasible purpose of a democracy and a town coming together to try to come up with a document? And this document has been praised...
I don't want to have a discussion between...
No, no, let's not have a discussion.
But I can answer that.
This is public comment.
No, when you are done with everybody agreeing, this is what we want to say, someone then says it in one voice, says, doesn't change it, says it in one voice. That's okay. Any other public comment?
Town reports, I'm hoping, are going to be available by the second week of February. Again, they're not going to be mailed out as a reminder, but we'll have them for picking up in the town office when we pay your taxes, which third quarter will be due by February 15. And I'll have some in the, I'm hoping, post office will let me put some in there, and also the store market.
Okay, do you have any other business?
I have some other ones.
He's not on the agenda. Oh, yeah, do you have something to do in public comment, Rex?
Yeah.
You're not on the agenda, so please.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, I remember you missed a meeting that I wish I was at, and I just wanted to be here at the meeting. If you had any questions about what was going on, I think I followed up from your comments on the last meeting, and I hope you got the letter that showed the cleanup work that was being done down at the site, and the cars that were removed, and the conditions that were heightened by the comments of the board. And if you have any comments or questions of me as to what is happening or what is going forward, or any other comments that you might have regarding the project, feel free to let me know.
What I'd rather do is for you to come back on the next meeting, when it's warranted, because there might be some other people who would like to come and hear this from the town, because it's not on the agenda, so if you can do that.
Along those lines, you know, the agenda only comes out quite often that day of the meeting, so...
No, but you met, you went with Bill and you knew the...
No, 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 I'm just saying, one clue for the agenda did. Say other people that would like to come, it'd be nice if the agenda came out.
The agenda comes out on Thursday, before every meeting. So they have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday to read the agenda. And it's posted on the website, in the school, library, and the village hall. Okay?
Yeah, okay.
Alan?
I had some correspondence with a select board member in Wyndham. Fellow's name is Court Scott. And it started out, this email, it started out, they only have a three-person board there. And I've talked with him before. He said, well, you have a five-person board in Graffton. And I said, yeah. So he wanted to know a little more about how it worked and how long we've been a five-person board in Graffton. So I talked to Kim, and just out of interest, you might be interested to know that we have you might be interested to know that we at Grafton went to a five-person board in 1986. So we've had it for a while. And he asked about the process, and how it took place and all. He intended to be here tonight, and at the last minute, he had to change what was dealt to him, so he couldn't be here. But the other, that was how the conversation started. But it led to another conversation, which is more interesting to all of us. And that is, he's been pursuing the fact that Wyndham County was only $7,000 short of hitting the threshold to where we could be reimbursed for the extra work we did, like in our case, Jamie with his excavator, that kind of extra work that we would have not normally done. Collectively, the county's $7,000 short. He's been pursuing, and he's trying to tell other towns that each town comes up with a thousand, it wouldn't take much to hit the threshold. So he's just asking us if there's anything else that we know about that perhaps got overlooked when they came around and did their initial, kind of a summary or initial visit from FEMA.
I know when we met with them, they were doing estimates. I think they estimated one part of riders for, like with Jamie, around $8,000. And when the invoice came in, it was like $16,000. No, it was only $6,500 or something. So you actually owe even more.
We'd be worse, worst case, yeah.
So I mean, I understand that trying to hit that threshold.
Correct.
But I would hate to be the town that in the end come in cheaper than the estimate, and everybody loses that money in the end. I know it wasn't expensive, but it came in cheaper than we expected. So I don't think they ever hit that $7,000.
And he's not asking anybody to fudge him. You know, he's just asking if we happen to know of more expenses that we didn't have, that we should revisit that. So I'll tell him that...
All right, some lower.
That's not what he wants to hear, but I'll tell him.
Alan, does he want to come on? Does he want to come to the next select board? Should I put him, we put him on the agenda?
He would like to, okay. But typically, typically, Wyndham, they meet Monday night, the same as we do, same time we do. And they must have met last night, and so he would have been available. But he may choose to just meet with some of us individually.
Do you want us to contact, what, Bill will contact them, see maybe we can arrange something?
Can.
I mean, either you do it, or have Bill do it, either one. And the purpose?
Well, they just like to ask questions of...
If how a five-man board works.
How it works, and advantages, disadvantages. I mean, I've already told them the, for two, for two select board people in Wyndham to have a conversation, they have a quorum. You know, and so if you want to discuss something, pros and cons, or go look at the building and prepare things, you got to do it individually.
Is that something you want to take a meeting to do? I mean, it's up to you guys, but...
Well, I'm just thinking, if he wanted to come here, he's welcome as...
Oh, yeah.
Public doesn't mean they have to be Grafton public, I guess, right?
No, 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 they can come to the meeting, but you want to put on an agenda to discuss it? No, no, I'm just asking if he wanted to come. I didn't know what the purpose was, but now I understand. But what he should really do is attend the meeting that'll take place after the elections, when the LCT holds there, tune up for new select board people or whatever, and then go through this thing very, with a lot of detail about the advantages and disadvantages of a three-board and a five-board.
He's been there, but he was at the meeting that we went to. But he just wanted to talk to people that are really doing it, I think, and neighboring town.
Well, I mean, I'd love to meet with him if he wants to, and maybe, or anybody else, we can meet individually, whatever. So just pass that along.
Has he gotten any feedback from the rest of the town, as their feeling for it?
He said just on the, there's two of the three select board that are in favor of going, pursuing the five. And there's one that's not in favor, and he doesn't know why yet. But as far as the rest of the community, I think they're just trying to do their homework and present it to the community. But, you know, you look at what we have here, where we have, you know, two people on the personnel committee, we have two people on the building committee, you know, we have some opportunities to do things that they can't do that.
Any other other business? As a reminder, petitions for offices are due, the deadline is January 28th. So, and that for school, and for the town. So if anybody hasn't done their, if they want to redo it or whatever, they need to do that by the 28th, that's the deadline. Pre-town meeting?
Can I also put out there, we are still looking for a school director for a one-year position. We need to, now that Ed is not opting to sign up again, everybody bumped up, and there's a one-year position that no one's spoken for. Need to see it go empty.
Well, that's a pretty important position, particularly with things going on, so I...
And it's only one year, because it's to fill out what she had taken. So anybody's interested at all, just in one year, you get your feet wet. And either you can go on further, or they might end it entirely.
Also, the pre-town meeting is at the school on Tuesday, February 26th, at 6:00 PM.
6:30. Bill put 6, but it's 6:30.
6:30. And they'll follow in the pre-town meeting for the school, and the town will be the candidates for it.
The school goes first at that meeting?
That is correct. And the date of the next meeting is February 4th, here, at 6:00 PM. And I want to thank everybody for coming. And drive safe on the way home. Stay warm. And we adjourn the meeting at 7 o'clock on the 22nd of January.